Call me in order.
All right, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our public access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. And citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. And all comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in our lobby. Any comments that are longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Chris Corcorino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to the approval of the agenda for today's meeting, September ninth, along with the regular session minutes, the Sanitary Commission minutes, the Roads Board minutes, and the closed session minutes from the August 26th meeting, which have all been circulated for review. Any additions, corrections?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add one desk item.
Okay.
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. So now I'll make a motion to approve the agenda minutes from after this amendment, after adding this amendment.
Second. Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five, zero.
All right. And we do have Commissioner Jack Wilson, who's zooming in this evening. I didn't hear an aye, but I did see a thumbs up on that, so it was unanimous. All right. All right, Commissioners, we just had a closed session under the General Provisions Article, Section 3305B1 for personnel and boards and commissions. And I think we have some board appointments to make here this evening.
I move to reappoint Jack Broderick and Maureen Wheatley to the Historic Stevensville Arts and Entertainment Advisory Board. These terms will expire on July 31st, 2028. I also move to appoint Thomas Brady, Ashley Holland, Patricia Kotzen. These terms will expire on July 1st of 2027. I also move to appoint Julie Rennelli and Judy Tucker. These terms will expire on July 31st of 2028.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five in favor.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Then I got that one other motion.
Yes, we have a consideration for a community care case, community care case manager position, which would be a transfer from the Department of Health to the Department of Aging.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of the Community Care Case Manager from the state to the County Department of Aging and Community Services.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I'll just note, too, that this position is a 100% grant-funded position, has been for many, many years, and the assignment will just be under the county umbrella versus the state health department umbrella going forward. Thank you. All right, that brings us to press and public comment. So we appreciate all citizens for taking time to express views to the county commissioners. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest. And in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
All right, first up, Linda Friday.
Good evening, Commissioners. Linda Friday, my last official meeting as the president of the Queen Anne's County Chamber. So tonight, as you know, I will be stepping down from my full-time position at the end of September and transitioning out completely by the end of the year. Before I step down, there are a few things I'd like to share. Phil and Jim, the two of you have been walking alongside me for more than 12 years, and your support and partnership have meant so much to me throughout this journey. Commissioner Dumeel, Phil, as a member of the chamber, and he has been one of our biggest advocates, even creating an excellent infomercial for us at one of our events, I'm sure you remember which one that was.
Yep.
Phil, your partnership has truly been amazing, and I am so grateful for your support throughout the years. Commissioner Moran, Jim, your continued partnership with the Drug Free Coalition, QAC Goes Purple, your support for local businesses, and all that you've done for nonprofits in Queen Anne's County are truly endless. I will always cherish our partnerships and everything that you've done for our residents. Commissioner McLaughlin, I know you've only been in your position for a short time, but I do have something to say to you. Patrick, in your first term, you have quickly stepped up to learn more about business in Queen Anne's County while also serving on the Drug Free Coalition. Your dedication has gone unnoticed. Commissioner Corcorino, Chris, thank you for chairing this team and leading Queen Anne's County with dedication. I also want to thank you for your leadership in bringing the housing authority back under the county umbrella, and I know you and I had a couple of meetings about that year, a few years ago. I know that was not an easy task, but you did get it done. Thank you for that. And I think you've got a good person in that position right now, Mike Clark. I think he's done an amazing job. Commissioner Jack Wilson, even though, thank goodness, he's got a seatbelt on and traveling. Jack, I'm not exactly sure how our paths first crossed, but like Phil, you started as a member of the chamber, and you quickly demonstrated the wealth of experience you have in trades. Together, one of the proudest accomplishments was co-founding with you Project Bright Future and bringing CTE to the forefront in so many ways. I truly enjoyed working with you to make Queen Anne's County's vision for trades a reality. Todd, I'm not going to leave you out. I can't forget, I can't forget you, that's for sure. Whenever I had a question or needed assistance, you were always there. Queen Anne's County is very fortunate to have you as their administrator. You are one of the most well-respected people I know, not just locally, but on the state level. And I really appreciate our friendship and all that you've done. Thank you again for your support and partnership over the years. As I step down from my position, I want to publicly introduce my replacement, and that is Tracy Wilson, and she's here with me tonight. Tracy has been with the chamber for eight years under my leadership, and I truly believe she will do an amazing job moving the chamber forward. So thank you again for all that you've done, and your friendship and all the support that you've given the chamber. The chamber wouldn't be what it is today without your support and your partnership. So thank you again, and I'm sure you'll see me around. Thank you.
Real quick, I just want to, I just want to say something. It's probably a selfish advertisement, but for anybody who's listening and has friends that live in Caroline County, just remember that name, Linda Friday.
I'm running for county commissioner for Caroline County.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Linda, thank you for all that you have done for the businesses and for Queen Anne's County, countless hours with so many things, it's hard to sort of list them all off, like have definitely left an impact in Queen Anne's County.
My pleasure.
All right, Daniel McHugh. Just state your name and your address.
Daniel McHugh, 123 Queens Colony High Road, Stevensville, Maryland. Thank you, President, is it Coacino?
Corcorino.
Corcorino, and Vice President Dumell for allowing me to address this body and the rest of the Commissioners as well. I have written an email, extensive letter to you guys, and to the sheriff, and to the state's attorney's office about 287G. There was, the Republican Party of Queen Anne's County did a, an event at Big Bats with an ICE agent about a month and a half ago. And, you know, my background is I worked in Annapolis for five years as a legislative aide for Maryland State Delegate Dan Cox, who went on the run for government, or that's a different story. But we did a lot of work on, you know, on illegal immigration and the things, and worked very closely with, you know, battling the sanctuary state that is Maryland, you know, as most of you know, Maryland's been a sanctuary state for a long time. 2010, Martin O'Malley took it into overdrive with the Democrats in the legislature, and they've done, the last 15 years, they've done the worst job on the planet to this state. You know, our state is broke, you know, billions of dollars of tax and free increases, destroying our schools, you know, lowering the standards of education in schools, and bankrupting the state essentially, you know, we're, just, you know, talking to legislatures in Annapolis going into this session, we're looking at potential more tax increases. The bottom line is that 287G will help make Queen Anne's County Sheriff and Public Safety Partners more safe for communities and citizens. It's a tool in the toolbox to enforce the law. And, you know, after what happened to Rachel Morin in Harford County, which is one of the most brutal murders by an illegal immigrant in this state, a mother of five who went jogging and was murdered on a trail by a guy who had a violent pass and had no business being in our country or this state. And just last week in Prince George's County, a 19-year-old girl was murdered by an undocumented immigrant. I, so I respectfully, and I say this respectfully, I hope you guys take a look at this. I spoke to Sheriff Jenkins at Frederick County on Friday, who's a, you know, big supporter of it. He's, you know, biggest advocate of it in this state, and he said he would gladly help you guys, and I'd gladly get you in touch with him to help you craft something for the county. So thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, anybody else? Are we online? All right, we'll close press and public comment.
All right, Commissioners, we can turn to tab number seven. We have one piece of legislation for this evening. So tab seven, item one, pages 139. This is Resolution 25-13, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. So this is ready for adoption, and this basically would authorize the issuance and sale of two series general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate amount, not till we exceed $39 million. The new money portion thereof, not till we exceed $26 million. And the remaining 13 million would be a refunding of an earlier bond for Queen Anne's County.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-13, general obligation bonds.
Second. All right, motion to second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five, oh.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we can move into presentation, so we can turn to tab number six, please. And tab six, item one, we have proclamation 2535, library card signup month. And we have our director of our Queen Anne's County Public Libraries, who's here this evening, Janet Salazar. She has a brief update for us as well. Welcome. Good to see you, Janet.
Nice to see you all, too. Thank you for allowing me to speak for just a brief minute. I'm just going to give you a quick summer reading update. Summer reading ran from June 2nd to August 2nd, and it was a gangbuster kind of summer. We were very, very busy. We had 2,878 people actually register for summer reading, which is a little less than last year, but still very, very good. Our completion rate has risen from 6.5 to 22.5, and I know that sounds really low, but it's a busy summer, so people get the game board, and then maybe they'll bring it back to us. But most of them probably completed, they just don't bring it back to the library. When you complete the game board and you bring it back, you get a free book. So we did get more books into the hands of children, so that was nice. We also presented 197 programs that drew in 5,116 participants. So we were busy, busy, busy. Reptile Wonders always is the most popular program. 687 people came to that. In July, the Makerspace at the Kent Island Branch finished 400 projects, which is the most projects it's ever done in one month since we started. So they've been very, very busy as well. And our mobile library, for the first time, visited 20 Queen Anne's County parks in a two-week period. They were very busy as well, and they supported Queen Anne's County Parks and Recreation Summer Camps and the migrant summer camp. So we were very busy this summer. At this point, I would just like to personally invite you all to the local author fair that is happening this Saturday at the Queen Anne's County Arts Council Building. We're doing it in partnership with them. It'll be from 10 to 12, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. And if you come, we hope you will help us with our community puzzle. We've been doing these all summer, so you might have seen them at the fair. You just take a blank piece and put your own spin on it. And this will be the last time we're doing the puzzle, so we hope to see you there. Happy Author Fair on Saturday.
For the Makerspace, is there some sort of project that's like most popular or device there?
Well, the 3D printer is the most popular, but the second most popular is the engraver.
Engraver is what I was thinking, yep.
Both of them have pretty, pretty high projects.
And so if people don't know how to use those, is there somebody there that will help them to learn how to do it?
Yes. We have staff who will show you how to use it.
Perfect.
I have heard great things about that, including from my own family, who's used it. May I read the proclamation for you?
Please do.
And for your staff. Proclamation 2535, whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, and whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, and whereas libraries are, offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning, and whereas library resources serve students of all ages, from early literacy to STEM programs to research databases, and whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond, and whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, and whereas a library card empowers an exclusive, excuse me, all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passion and interest, and whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities. And now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, hereby proclaim September as library card signup month in Queen Anne's County, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today.
As soon as possible.
And do you waive the fees if they're late?
We don't really have late fees anymore.
Really?
Really. We do not.
I might get a library card.
Well, there you go. You should. If you don't already have one, why don't you all already have library cards? That's my question.
I do, and I got.
I know you do.
So I renewed it for you when we had the library card day, so I'm on top of it. All right.
All right.
Lamont?
All right, Commissioners, next we have Warden Lamont Cook and Captain Brianna Cotman from the Detention Center, and they're going to present their departmental update this evening as our next presenters.
Good evening.
All right, good to see you both.
Good evening.
Ms. Cotman has been with us now a little over, almost three years now, I'm thinking.
About two years.
Two years, okay. And she's been a great addition to us, and she's learning very quickly, very quickly, how things are rolling up on this end. And I told her to come on up, get the experience of being here before you, and because she'll be doing this again in the future.
So this is your second time, though, right?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so we'll start with the grants and funding. We secured a more grant for $500,000. That is going to cover our peer support and our certified medication technician for our MAT program. This MAT program is fully funded by the grant. Kent County agreement as potentially $500,000 a year to our revenue, we went into partnership with them to hold 10 inmates due to issues that they're having at their facility. We're charging them $125 a day to hold them and cover their costs, except extreme medical costs, and they do still provide their own travel. We have a library grant that was renewed, or will be renewed October. It covers the purchase of books for reentry, books, reentry notebooks, and other resources. It's been a really big hit with the Detention Center. These inmates are reading a lot more. They're getting a reentry book that gives them resources when they do get out. I can't tell you how many are using them, but they are getting the information.
That's good.
Want to talk a little bit about staff morale. We celebrated Correction Officer Week May 5th through the 9th. It was a successful morale building week. We had a really good time. We were very excited. Ms. Beverly Churchill stopped by and enjoyed the festivities with us. We took lots of pictures, so if you guys want to see them. We got new books from EMS. Majority of our officers were seeing new books. They're all very, boots, I'm sorry. They're all very grateful for those boots. We got a new barber, big mix. He's now serving our facility on a biweekly basis. Him and his assistant come in and provide barbering services for our inmate population. We established in-house emails. We're just trying to enhance the communication within staff. Things get lost a lot in transition, so we just wanted to come up with a formal way to keep the news flowing within the officers. I recently was promoted to the Maryland Correctional Standards Commission in April of 2025. And on the training participation with the MCA and the MCA conference, keeping all 23 counties involved, Warden Cook, Major Greenwood, and I all participate in keeping all the counties involved in everything that's going on, updates in the wardens' roundtable and warden meetings. We have some programs and some initiatives. The End to Service Work Program is through our Airmark, which is our food vendor. They train our inmates in food service and give them certifications right while they're there. Our Airmark has also taken an interest in helping with GED, so if they have extra time, they do study GED with these offenders to try to help them be better when they get released. The reentry program through the Health Department has been initiated, so that way the offenders that are going to be released have resources and have a support person when they are released. In partnership with Queen Anne's County Drug Court, we have offered our facility as for community service. That gives anybody that's in the drug court program that need community service hours, we give them some things to do, like cut grass, cleaning the windows, litter removal. It gives a time for the officers and the offender to communicate in community setting. It's building a better relationship between the offenders and the community. So these guys could, or girls can earn community service hours which they need for the drug court program. Our pre-trial services is still ongoing success. It's reducing the unnecessary amount of inmates incarcerated. It's putting them back into the society and making sure they stay that way. And lastly, the partnership with the Behavioral Health Summit, the Detention Center took interest in working with the judges, state's attorney, sheriff's department, and parole and probation to help address mental health concerns and focus on different individuals that need treatment to appropriate facilities and started incarcerating them.
Our medical and behavioral health programs, we've been looking at some ongoing enhancements to care, researching other options, which includes looking at other possible vendors to provide services for the inmates in our facility to ensure that they get the best care within our budgetary limits. Also, the MAT expansion program, we are looking at, through a grant, getting a peer support person and also a CMT to support the MAT nurse. She has nobody to relieve her, so to speak, so we want to get somebody in so she can take her time off and also help, because sometimes that's a very stressful position to fill when you deal with the MAT program, and that's very, very involved. So the, these two positions would be coming in under grant, 100% funded through the grant, and I believe it runs for two years, that grant?
Yes.
Yes.
And possibly three, with the progress.
Right.
If it's good progress.
Yep. So we were very fortunate. We came in early applying for the grant, and so, you know, we got the advantage of having this two-year, possibly three-year opportunity, which is very rare these days in some of these grants, especially for corrections agencies. Looking at safety and accountability, we had one recent assault incident, which involved criminal charges that had been filed, and they are pending. We also have the period right through here now when we're looking at updating our policies and procedures. That's part of one of COMAR regulations for all facilities in the state to do that. So we've been pretty much just getting our feet wet trying to get that done. We also have audit follow-up on August 10th by the state, and hopefully we will gain our 100% compliance at that time. A lot of that's done virtually now. Used to have them on-site. Now they're doing them virtually. Little work intensive, because we're sending information back and forth virtually and through, what's that, Google Drive, and that takes a lot of work trying to keep that together. So, you know, we hopefully will make 100% at that point. We also have a new transport vehicle. It's more up-to-date, secure, and it helps us with efficient offender movement. A lot of our days are taken up with two officers, sometimes three van loads, going out in the county, out of the county, across the bridge, trying to get these folks to court, special medical or mental health evaluations, all those number of things we're responsible for. So we want to make sure we have vehicles that are capable of handling that with few incidents. We have a language line that we're looking at, looking at improved communication for non-English speaking individuals. We still are required to provide the communication for them, for their families. We still are required to provide the communication for them, for their families and their community, doing that, and also for the courts. So all that's really involved. We've been speaking to EMS and HR about various options, so we're still looking at the future as far as getting that taken care of. Under the ICE program, we've had some discussions regarding that, and we've been reviewing the changes and other aspects of the policies. Mako in the summer conference did have one workshop that involved the ICE, and they had different people from different aspects of it, corrections, local government, and the ICE director for this region, she was also involved in the conversation. Very interesting, fully attended workshops, so.
I imagine.
It was, it was, it was an interesting experience to watch that. Recognition of staff. Look, I can't say enough, I know I talk about this young lady sitting next to me, but we still got Bo out there, Greenwood, and we have Heather, who's our lieutenant, and then we have the shift supervisors and all the other officers that are out there doing the job 24/7. I can't really say enough, you know, we have new officers, we have veteran officers, first-line supervisors, some of them are doing training, the medical staff, MAT staff. It's a lot in the operations, more than just getting those people out there, locking them up, and letting them sit there and feed them. It's a lot of other technical things that go on. And, you know, I can't say enough about the staff. We have some people in there that have been there as long, if not longer than I have. I won't say how many years, but, you know, they're there and they're staying there, and we're very fortunate that. We don't have the kind of turnover that some of the other agencies do. So I'm very, so I, I just want to really say that out publicly so you all can hear it as well as folks that are at home. We'd also like to thank you commissioners, along with Beverly, Pat, and Todd, for your ongoing availability. Sometimes we run into some obstacles, and I know I've called him more so lately. It's just been circumstances that we've had to deal with out there. And, you know, he, he quickly gives you some guidance, sometimes he asks, "I'll call you back, Lamont," and whatever, or sometimes he tells me, "Warden." Depends on how serious it is. But I get, you know, I get the support, and you all have supported us, and I just want to tell you all, we're really thankful of that. It has a really large impact, not only on us at administration, but the officers. They understand that because they see our comings and goings, our interactions with all of you, and they realize that. So I thank you all very much for what you've done.
Yours, yours is not an easy job, and, and I know a lot of the folks know very little about what you do and the mandates that come down from the Maryland State Department of Corrections and, and all the Ts that you have to cross, and all the Is you have to dot, and all the boxes that you have to check to come into state requirements, and, and it's tough. It's tough. But you're appreciated.
Thank you.
That doesn't go without being said. You guys are appreciated.
Thank you.
And, and the support from the set of commissioners will continue. All you have to do is pick up the phone and let us know what you need.
Will do.
Unless it's after hours, then you call Todd.
Then after hours, you call Todd.
Phil needs his beauty sleep.
So any update on the new detention center? Do you want to?
The only thing I can tell you right now is that we're still waiting for one set of individuals to give us definite understanding as to what they want to do.
Do you have another set that has done that, correct?
Yeah, oh yeah, all, just waiting on the one.
Okay.
And Todd's trying to handle it as best he can, but I can understand what he's up against there, so let me clarify how to say that. The other part of this is, we did get a notice from the state about some training regarding the funding and how that's to be handled, and the reports, you got that also today. So we got, I got that. I'll talk to our illustrious colleague back here, probably tomorrow. I haven't had a chance to talk to him much this week, but anyhow, we're going to pursue and keep on going. We do have, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, we do have some funding to continue the planning to some extent. We do.
A little.
A little bit. That's why I said, to some extent. I made it that way, so, you know, but anyhow.
He's a glass-half-empty kind of guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, we get along real well. It's really great working with him and his team also, and we have her on board too, so she's learning, you know, how.
Well, you have a great teacher.
I can see.
The man forget about, more about the correctional institutions than most people ever know.
It's a lot to take in. I always carry my notebook, so I can write it down. Well, thank you guys for having, having me tonight, and thank you for Queen Anne's County for letting me represent the detention center.
Captain, the Kent relationship.
Yes.
Is it, how many do we have from them? It says up to 10. Do we have 10 of them?
We actually have more than 10. So we have 10 right now. We have one more that we're doing on a courtesy hold. We couldn't be housing that facility, so we're not actually charging them for that person. But we just talk to them on a regular basis, and I'm hoping that the more we go along, we can bring in even more inmates, especially if the officer count goes down. Maybe we'll bring in even more inmates to the point that maybe we'll have at least 20.
From Kent County?
From Kent County, yes.
So is it just that their holding facility is just?
They're required to provide local services, basic local services right now. I think they're trying to do some research now to see where they could go with that, but they must, if, local police departments must have a place to take those individuals when they're arrested. The courts must have them in court within a period of time, so they want local location for them. And, you know, they're also still responsible for the, the medical and health needs if these individuals have to be transported. You know, that's required. Plus, they're having to transport these individuals, just like we do, to other jurisdictions on, on RITS. So it's a lot of things going on there that they still have to handle. Just unfortunate that the, the numbers have went down so far, but still they were required to maintain operations until the state tells them otherwise. And you always have to check with the state on these things, and apparently that's what they did when they had called me a couple of years ago about this. And I said, "There's only certain things you can do. Anything else, you contact the state. They'll direct you what you can and cannot do." So that's where it's at.
Gee, you're a valuable resource for other detention centers.
Well, thank you. I try to be. Yeah, try to be.
Last question, Warden. Would you be kind enough to explain the 287, and if ICE calls you and you have an illegal person who has committed a crime, and they're in our detention center, and they're going to be released? Can you take it from there?
Okay. Once those individuals come in, the officers have a set of procedures that they follow. One of them is doing a background, a limited background, initial limited background on the individual. When they obtain that information, if it falls within the guidelines of what they feel ICE would want to know, they will contact ICE. ICE will check their database and then let us know whether or not they want that individual. The individual maintains custody with us until a couple of things happen. They're about to be prepared to be released by the court, because they all have to have initial appearance, and we do that normally virtually, which is the same thing as being there, but it's virtual. The judge gets to look at that. Our pretrial people do an initial detailed background on them, and then they, they report to the court as he's doing that hearing to let them know what's going on and advise if ICE may want the individuals, they'll let the court know. However, what happens is, when that happens, then ICE is notified, they send a detainer to us. Now, if the person has a pending case that he's going to have to go to court on in our jurisdiction.
And he stays with us.
He or she is held till that case is over with. Now, the other part of this, sometimes there might be detainers from other counties, so we have to make sure we honor those. But we contact that jurisdiction ahead of time to make certain you still want the individual, we have your detainer. Once all that's cleared, then what we have done, and Captain is very good at that, she'll let ICE know the release time of that individual, when that person may be released. And then there's a period of time that they have to come to pick the individual up, and so far, that's worked. We've been doing that for years. For years, we've been doing that. So, you know, that's how that works.
There really isn't, there really isn't, it's really not an issue here for us in Queen Anne's County. We've been, we've been following the correctional facilities, the state level's requirements, and the rights of these individuals as they go through the, the process after they're arrested and charged.
Right.
The only difference with the 287G and us having the program will be our officers, or select amount of officers, will be able to do the same job that the contacts that we have with ICE would do. Basically, just identify if that person is possibly wanted with ICE or possibly has any kind of immigration things going on. They would just make that identification, and then they would still get the ICE agent to send a detainer. So the only difference would really be is that instead of ICE actually coming, talking to the person, we can actually do the initial talk and then forward it to ICE. Honestly, it's, it's not much different. We have a really good connection with the ICE agents, and they're, they communicate with us really quickly. If we call them and say, "Hey, we have somebody that maybe possibly," we give them the information, they'll say yea or nay pretty quickly and get us a detainer if necessary, so.
So just to clarify your comment about international, Captain Cotman. So if you check, and they're clean here in the United States, except obviously you have them because they've committed a crime, are you checking their home country?
So yes, that's part of the reason how we identify if somebody is ICE. If they were not a citizen of the United States, that's what alerts us right there that they may, that we need to check with ICE and see if there's anything going on. The other questions that we ask is about criminal history, things that have happened here, see if they have any kind of criminal history. But the, the red flag is if they're not born in the United States, we make sure that if they're not born here, do they have citizenship? Have they earned that citizenship? And if they haven't, then we forward that information to ICE, and then ICE lets us know, "Hey, we do want them." "No, we don't. We may be interested," and we'll come out and do maybe more fingerprints to try to see if this is of interest of ICE.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks you too.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Good to see you, Warden. Captain, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, commissioners, our last presentation for this evening is item 3 under tab 6. Actually, there's no information there, but we have Tim Oland and his company, so come on up. And Tim is with the Queen Anne's County Corral and going to talk about his Normandy trip.
Can I get a?
Please come on up and, yeah, yeah. Please introduce your folks and.
Well, first off, I want to thank the commissioners for the support that we have had at Queen Anne's Corral. We would not be able to do it without the community support and the support, of course, of the commissioners. We got this beautiful flag from Commissioner Moran. We also had a, a flag for the city of Centerville or town of Centerville that we presented to the only surviving family members of someone that I'm going to read a little presentation to you right now. We do have a picture. This all came about, we were traveling to Normandy, and I had known a gentleman years ago who had served in the US Army and had gone ashore on D-Day. He was a resident of Queen Anne's County of Kent Island, and so I knew when we were going on this trip that there were others. And so we did some research through, unfortunately, the lady left Public Library. Library was fantastic resource. We would not have been able to get the information that we got without the help of the Kent Island Library. But we, as a group, presented both the Queen Anne's County flag and the Centerville flag over the grave of William Quillan, who was a resident of Centerville. So let me read this the best I can. Let it be known that in June of 2025, representatives of Queen Anne's Corral traveled to Normandy, France as part of the All-American Community Chorus to participate in commemoration events associated with the 81st anniversary of the commencement of Operation Overlord, also known as the D-Day Invasion. The chorus was comprised of singers from across the United States and led by Robert Huntington, the artistic director of Queen Anne's Corral, who happens to be standing right next to me. The chorus performed at several historic locations, including Utah Beach, St. Miraglis, and the La Madeleine Church in Paris, France. On June 5th, 2025, 17 Queen Anne's County Corral representatives had the privilege to visit the gravesite of PFC William Quillan of the 115th Infantry Division of the 29th Division in Normandy American Cemetery in Colville, Surmer. PFC Quinlan was a resident of Centerville in Queen Anne's County, Maryland, and made the ultimate sacrifice on June 16th, 1944, while serving in the United States Army. Tonight, September 9th, 2025, Queen Anne's Corral presents to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners the Queen Anne's County flag that was flown above his grave and signed by those who had the honor to attend and thank PFC William Quillan for the freedom we currently enjoy today.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is our flag, so, here, you get it.
Yeah.
Get it back. But I do have a little folder with the, the photos, and there was a press release that ran in the Record Observer that gives more detail for you guys, so I'm glad to share it with you. And once again, cannot thank enough the support that you guys give us to do what we do.
Well, thank you for doing that.
What a great trip. It must have been an amazing experience.
Absolutely.
It's hard to describe.
Wow.
Every, everyone in this room should go to Normandy at some point and.
I'm going to make that happen.
And visit. It's, it's an unbelievable place.
So.
I'm making that happen, and I'm also going to make, looking forward to December 7?
Can we do a picture? Can you?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, I think it was the concert.
Yeah. Yes, the concert is on December 7th at 3 o'clock at T-PAC.
There you go.
Great narrator.
Yes, we have, have someone that narrates. I forgot who it is. Eric, let's do a photo with the commissioners.
Yeah. I'll take guys back onto the chairs here. There you go. Face that direction. I'm sure you guys had your pictures taken quite often while you guys were over there.
Yes.
Make sure you have your sun up.
Make sure it breaks that up.
All right, there you go.
Right way?
There we go.
Ready?
Awesome.
Fantastic.
What are you going to sing for us?
Thank you.
On the 7th, 7th?
What are you singing for us right now?
God bless America.
I've got, I've got a place for it.
Can you do that? All right. You need the microphone?
We're singing.
We're singing.
We're going to sing.
Oh, yes!
All right.
If it's anything the commissioners do, if they put people on notice, I mean, they're going to.
There's a notice on here.
There you go.
I'll let you do its final resting spot.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. We weren't really prepared to sing. Don't sing December 7th all you want.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I guess it's just Alan that's going to sing today, so.
All right, commissioners, that concludes our presentations for this evening. We can now move into our action items. First, we have the Department of Public Works. They've got four items, so gentlemen, if you want to come on up. So if you want to turn to tab number 2 for our Department of Public Works action items. And the first item under tab 2, item 1, pages 1 through 20, is cell tower lease agreement for Love Point Park. And that has been identified as a Verizon service gap fill-in site, and this is a proposal for a new macro tower at Love Point Park on a pole that is needed to provide additional cell service in that area, keeping up with current coverage demands. And I'll let these guys take it away with any other details, but it is for a five-year lease, $14,400 per year.
So they're, they're actually, are they going to put a light on top of it that can shine down on the tennis courts or?
Yes.
I moved to execute the lease agreement with Selco Partnership to allow installation of a new 90-foot, 95-foot macro cell tower pole at Love Point Park.
Second. You got a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'd like to ask, do we have to pay for all of these cell towers? I mean, don't some of the companies put up towers along 50 and 301?
Yeah, we're, we're not paying for this. They'll, they'll be paying for the install.
Yeah, they pay and they pay us too.
And they pay us.
Right.
Least.
Release space on the pole.
Right.
Well, I'm glad that we've cleared that up.
Alright, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh.
Alright, thank you Commissioners. Item number two on pages twenty-one and twenty-two is the wetland mitigation construction contract award. So, uh, we've received, um, sealed bids for wetland mitigation construction on the Tanner property. Um, a number of bids were received and we're recommending the bid to Martin's Excavating and Hauling, Centerville, Maryland. Lowest responsible bidder, one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and zero cents.
I move to award the wetlands mitigation construction contract to Martin's Excavation and Hauling, LLC of Centerville, Maryland, in the amount of one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars, and authorize the Director of Public Works to issue the notice of award and execute the contract on behalf of the County Commissioners.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh.
Alright, thank you Commissioners.
They're still here.
Yeah, I see them. So we still got a couple more items left. Um, the next item is item three on pages twenty-three through twenty-five. This is for the two thousand and eleven Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plant Amendment eleven twenty-five. Uh, this was subject of a public hearing, uh, two weeks ago for the Brennan Provosticic Properties. This is on Great Neck Road in Stevensville.
I move to approve the MAP Amendment request to upgrade the sewer service designation for the Brennan Provozonic Properties from S-six to S-two L.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh.
What, just out of curiosity, what's, what's that gonna cost them? What's your best estimate on how?
Well, we're gonna have ten thousand per home just in allocation fees. They're gonna have over fifteen thousand for each grinder pumps that are, you know, for fifty thousand before you even have a piece of pipe in the ground.
I'm, I'm glad they're doing it, you know? I mean, any, anytime we can get a septic system offline and, and on it.
Yeah.
And no pain for it. You know, we're under water.
Yeah.
Yep. Increases the value of the property as well.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Alright, very good. Alright, uh, our last item for Public Works this evening is item number four. And this is the systematic replacement of a front-end loader, uh, for the Rhodes Division. And this is under a state contract. Purchase replaces a two thousand and seven case loader and the cost of this would be two hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents via the Sourcewell contract, uh, with CAT.
I move to approve the purchase of one Caterpillar nine twenty-six fourteen A wheel loader with a two-point twenty-five yard bucket and optional twelve-foot plow from Carter Machinery Company of Felton, Delaware, in the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents via the existing Sourcewell contract number zero one one seven two three dash C-A-T.
Second. Got a motion second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh.
Thank you.
Alright Commissioners, any other questions for these, uh, fine gentlemen here this evening? We're good.
They all wanna say something, but we have to, you gotta ask the right question. You notice that, right?
That's right.
You gotta ask the right question. It's like working with the state. No, I'm good.
Good.
I'm good.
Thanks guys.
Thanks guys.
Thanks guys.
Thank you Commissioners.
Shane, I sent you guys an email about, uh, fence for the, uh.
Go.
Yeah, thank you. Prospect Bay.
Alright Commissioners, uh, we have a few action items under tab three remaining this evening. So if you want to turn to tab number three, item one, we have, uh, proclamation twenty-five thirty-seven, National Senior Center Month. Representatives here, I believe, as well. Come on up. Director Matthew Willis and Stacy Voorhees, our senior center manager.
Good evening. Again, uh, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, we have a proclamation that we do every year in September for National Senior Center Month. And I have Stacy Voorhees with me, who is the senior center administrator. And she can tell you a few things about how we celebrate National Senior Center Month before you do the proclamation.
So, um, this year, the theme for National Senior Center Month is powering possibilities, flip the script. So in addition to our normal programming that we do all the time, each of our centers, um, is tasked to do a special event of some sort. It can be a one-day event or it can be, um, multi-month event. So, um, the Active Aging Center that's as a part of the Queen Anne's County YMCA, um, they are doing tomorrow portraits and story, storytelling with, um, the folks that visit there. Um, this is an initiative to, um, realize that the folks that we serve are more than meets the eye. You know, it's not just the person that's walking through the hallway, that they've lived a lifelong story and they've got that to tell. Um, so they're, they're capturing that through portraits and storytelling tomorrow. Um, Graysonville Senior Center, um, a couple of events that they have coming up. They're doing, um, a information and assistance resource table, which is pulling from our community care side. Um, our benefits specialists will be there to offer a variety of different, um, pieces that they can help the older adults in Queen Anne's County with, whether it be, um, applying for, um, housing or working with getting SNAP benefits or the variety of benefits that they're able to connect people to that a lot of times people don't even know exist for them. Um, so they'll be there on the twenty-third of September, um, with that information and doing some outreach. Um, then on the twenty-fourth, um, they're gonna have an ice cream social as well as in the lobby, there'll be a one-man band playing some oldies music, um, greeting the folks that are coming in. So, um, that's what Graysonville has this month. Um, Ken Island Senior Center is inviting new and old, um, uh, members to try something new this month. Um, so they have instituted several new activities. Um, they're doing seated volleyball, um, on Fridays at one o'clock all month long. Uh, they're doing chair line dance on Mondays at eleven, um, all month long. And then two programs that they have, um, they put out some interest and feelers and they're gonna be starting a bongo group. So the first meetup for that is on the eighteenth. And tomorrow they're doing, um, two inspire collage boxes. Um, so that's a few of the new activities in addition to what they have every month. And Sudlersville Senior Center this month for National Senior Center Month has decided to celebrate the decades. So each week this month has a different theme. They started last week with a fifties theme. Um, this week they're celebrating the sixties, next week the seventies, and then the last week of the month they're doing the eighties. And throughout the week they're doing, um, on Wednesdays they have a special treat that, um, they are making that resembles that decade. Um, on Fridays they're doing a movie day and, and showing a movie from that decade. They did Grease for last week and, um, they're doing E.T. for eighties week. So, um, and they're also doing like trivia that's related to that decade or bingo that's related to that decade. I actually had the pleasure of being there with them, um, last week when they did the Bing, the fifties bingo. And it was so neat to see, you know, you think, okay, they're gonna call out hopscotch and they're gonna put their little bingo chip down and, but it wasn't just that. It was them reminiscing about playing hopscotch in the fifties. And it was just really inspiring to see. So, um, you know, we're celebrating National Senior Center Month this month, but really every month we get to do this. So it's, it's a nice, nice thing. So come and join us anytime you like.
Yeah, there's always something exciting going on. There's no doubt about it.
All those events.
Would you like for me to email you? Yeah, absolutely. I could, I can do that.
Can't make it though.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I can, I can send you some information.
So I have the pleasure of reading the proclamation, uh, twenty-five dash thirty-seven, where as the Queen Anne's County Area Agency on Aging celebrates National Senior Month with the twenty twenty-five thing powering possibilities, flip the script, encouraging us to reimagine aging and recognizing the evolving role of seniors as dynamic catalysts for innovation, inclusion, and personal growth. And whereas older adults contribute meaningfully, meaningfully to society, investing their leadership, wisdom, experiences, and time to enrich the strength of our community. And whereas the Active Aging Center, Graysonville Senior Center, Ken Island Senior Center, and Sudlersville Senior Center are vibrant community hubs for mobilizing the creativity, energy, and vitality and commitment of the older residents of Queen Anne's County. And whereas through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, the senior centers serve as pillars of connection and support that empower older adults to thrive by computing, contributing to their own health and well-being through wellness programs, lifelong learning, social connection, and volunteering opportunities. And whereas today's senior centers are not just a place to gather, they are centers of vitality and empowering new possibilities for how we live, age, and connect. Whereas we honor the staff, volunteers, and participants who make our senior centers welcome, inspiring, and essentially parts of the community fabric. Now therefore, we, the County Commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Senior Center Month. And we urge all residents to recognize, celebrate the powerful contributions of the seniors, centers, participants, and the special efforts of the staff and the volunteers who work to enhance a well, enhance the well-being of our older citizens of Queen Anne's County. Signed by your county commissioners, our county administrator, and also our executive assistant to the Commissioners. I, I mean, this is, so some of us are approaching our twelfth year as elected officials here in Queen Anne's County. And probably one of the best parts of the job is participating in the different things that, that take place at our senior centers. You know, to, to, to the Christmas party at, at Ken Island and, and, uh, the dancing and, and everything that they do and the, and the, and the Christmas luncheon that we have at, at Graysonville. I mean, it's just, it just, I mean, it's tough to describe and put in words, the, the energy. For me, it's the contribution that these volunteers make in our community with the life experiences they've had when they were younger. And the knowledge and, and, and understanding of the importance of realizing that our seniors do play a very important role in our community. And, and you guys and what you do to promote them. So thank you very much for everything that you guys do.
Do we have a?
Thank you.
Do we have a date for the, uh, Christmas?
We are steadfast in planning that right now.
Okay. So in other words, not yet.
To, to be determined, but very soon.
I'll find out, I'll find out at the next meeting. There you go.
Coming soon.
That's right.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to your email. Commissioner Dumino would like you to do Thanksgiving too, so.
Yeah.
He likes food.
Alright Commissioners, uh, item number two under tab three, uh, pages two and three. This is, uh, the Gunston School. This is a citizen-sponsored text amendment from the Gunston School, twenty-five dash twelve, growth allocation for non-adjacency standards. So they've provided this, uh, text amendment to amend the growth area allocation review criteria to include non-adjacentary standards for the expansion of their nonprofit institutional uses out there at Gunston that'll provide education, uh, further education in youth camps that existed prior to nineteen ninety-eight. So this would be conveyed to the Planning Commission next, public hearing, back to the Commissioners, uh, Critical Area Commission, back to the Commissioners, another public hearing, and then final approval by the board. So quite a lengthy process. I know they're anxious to get this, uh, moving and done so they can make some improvements and expansions out there at the school. Stephanie's been working on that for a while with them, so.
Critical area, citizen-sponsored text amendment twenty-five twelve to the Planning Commission for Investigation and Recommendation. Second.
Got a motion second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh.
Alright, thank you Commissioners. Thank you Stephanie for getting all this together. Alright Commissioners, item number three on pages four through seven, we have, um, for Churchill Park Pickleball Court Contract, uh, the Department of Recreation received a request from the town to construct three pickleball courts where they were originally supposed to have a tennis court. Um, and, uh, we do have this price here for three pickleball courts, uh, through ATC Corporation, formerly American Tennis Courts. For that project slated at two hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
I move to let Commissioner Moran make the motion.
I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to contract with ATC Corp. from the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, Contract NCPA slash Omnia Number zero eight dash forty, to construct three pickleball courts and associated stormwater management facility with the, with the amount not to exceed two hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Can you come up? Project manager, come on up, cause you're next. You wanna share with, um, our viewers what we're working on here, what you're working on here?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. So when the Churchill Park was initially planned, the master plan had
called for a tennis court, um, years ago, as the, the park was being developed, obviously that was the one part that was not completed the last several years. Um, in conversations with Commissioner Rhodes, he has brought that up, that the master plan from the eighties has always called for a tennis court. Every time we had an opportunity to meet.
Back to the future, huh?
Yeah. So we continued to talk about that and, you know, would it be best to, to be tennis? Because, you know, the popularity of tennis is, is growing, but at a slower rate than obviously the explosion of pickleball. Um, so through our conversations, you know, it was based on really our recommendation that we think that, um, the three pickleball courts would be better served for the population that is asking for it. And they have, um, been in Charlie's ear, um, talking about wanting pickleball. So, you know, that was kinda what led us in our direction of that. So we wanna go ahead and complete the master plan by fulfilling that last part of the, the program.
So I was there a few weeks ago. So can you tell us where it's gonna be? So as you drive in?
As you drove, drive in, it's going to be on the left-hand side. And you'll see a, it's not the first square that you see on your, on your left-hand side, it's the second square.
Like across on the bathroom?
Um, yes, further, further up. Um, but not, not until you get past the, um, uh, there, there's one small field there that's on your, your left-hand side. It's just prior to that.
Okay.
It'll fit right in there. And, um, ATC is the corporation or the company that has done all of our other pickleball courts. So we have a, you know, a great relationship with them and, um, they do a great job, uh, constructing them.
What's the turnaround?
Um, right now it's in engineering. Um, they're hoping that it should be relatively soon. I'm hoping by, by spring we could be able to do it, spring or summer. Again, getting the engineering, getting the, the plans and the schedule and then getting on ATC's, um, schedule. Um, so I think this is.
Yeah, well, you talk about taking away impervious surface. Everybody has to get involved.
Correct.
Is this the same folks that did, um, the report?
Yes, yeah.
And you're happy with them, obviously?
By far. They do tremendous amount of work. If we ever have any issues with it, they're very responsive. So, um, it's a good, good working relationship.
So I was gonna save it till roundtable, but I went to the Krabby, Krabby Patty Pickleball and it was just fabulous. On, uh, the, the place was just packed.
Me this past weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, they got rained out and they couldn't compete on Sunday. But, yeah, it, I mean, it's just exploding. That, that would be an understatement. And, and that's across the country.
They, they were.
You can't make, you can't build these courts fast enough.
Commissioner, they were parked down.
Oh, yeah.
Route eight.
Yep.
Uh, it, it was fabulous.
They had two hundred and forty-eight people registered for that event. And of the two hundred and forty-eight, thirty percent were actually, um, citizens of Queen Anne's County and members of the crappy pickleball club as well. So, you know, it's a nice event that includes their, their group, but it also attracts people from, um, from, from throughout the state. And it's part of a, um, a five series, um, pickleball thing on the eastern shore. Um, and if you win, you collect points. And if you win in your category and you have the most points, then you go to the championship, which is, I think it's in Salisbury, um, this year if I'm not mistaken. So.
I got no points for showing up. I don't know what that's all about.
Well, I actually had the opportunity to run into some of them Saturday night at El Jefe's after, uh, it was over. And they were all wearing their, their tournament T-shirts, uh, tournament shirts. And they were just, just, they were very excited about it and were looking, you know, forward in the future to, to more of these tournaments. So.
So some comments, if I will. Thank you for, um, Thank you for the bleachers, and especially thank you for the shade, because it was pretty hot by noon. So thank you for doing that. And will we be able to get this, some shade in Churchill as well?
We have not talked about that yet. Again, it's, I think part of it is, let's see what kind of use and waiting times we have.
Right.
Obviously, with, you know, 10 courts, the group that's there, it's over 300 members, there's always going to be people waiting, so those shade structures come in handy.
Yep.
With the three-court system, you know, we'll see if we get, you know, 40 people coming at, you know, 8:00 in the morning.
And the last thing, the biggest question that I got was water, water, water.
Right.
So is there something that we can do about getting them a drinking fountain?
We've been discussing internally with that, and I know I've replied back to Commissioner Dumino and Corcarino about that. In our park system, we have, technically, we have removed our outdoor water fountains. And, you know, part of it is because of testing, you know, it fails if you get a bird that goes in there or a squirrel that, you know, does whatever squirrels do in there.
Or ants.
Or ants, and that's enough to fail the test. The other part of it is...
Winterization.
Winterization, but it's also the most attractive amenity for kids to put dirt in and block it up. And then therefore, you know, one of our biggest fears is it's going to be down more than it's up.
Do we allow food trucks in there?
At our parks?
Yeah, at that one there. I'm just wondering, I mean, it seems like if you're going to sell that kind of water, Phil, get over there with your cart and...
Yeah, yeah. I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking bottled water.
Yeah.
That says, "Elect Phil Dumino, County Commissioner, third district," and then just hand them out all day long.
We can't be a part of that, but I can.
Krabby Patty Phil.
Very good.
We're still considering options.
One bad apple can't ruin everything for us. There's got to be some solution to this. You put up a sign and say, you know, "A kid might have peed in here, so the drinking water's on you."
And I held the conversation with, you know, a few of the people that were there on Saturday, and one of the things that we see, you know, throughout our park system is, you know, the Yeti cups, the Stanley cups, you know. People nowadays are more attuned to bringing their own water.
Oh, yeah.
To that. So, you know, there's, in my mind, there's a balance that you have to kind of, you know, see, is it money and time well-spent to do that, or is it just there? It's nice to say that I have one, it's like, "I got a pool, but I never use it, but I got one."
Right.
Well, look, I didn't know that there wasn't water there, and I'm just telling you what people were walking up to, and it was probably a dozen people that walked up to me.
They were part of the 70% that don't live in Queen Anne's County.
Let me text them and ask them.
No, but we are still considering options.
There's got to be something, some type of compromise.
Right.
I don't know what that is, but...
Patrick will tell you back in his day, there was just a hose, and you turned it on, and you drank out of it.
That's right. Well, actually, they electrocuted it if you drank too much.
All right. Got a motion? We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. All right. Our next item also is for parks, item number, item number four, excuse me, item number four, South Island Trail Phase Three. This is a declaration of critical area forest conservation protection easement. As part of the development of Phase Three of the South Island Trail, we do have to remove some trees, and there's some disturbance in the critical area, and these instruments are prepared to provide a protected area up at the Crumpton Park to remain as a forested area in perpetuity in compliance with critical area standards for that disturbance. So we have those documents here for review and signature.
Yep. I move to approve the off-site critical area mitigation plan for the South Island Trail Phase Three and execute the declaration of easement.
Second.
Got a motion second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five o.
Excellent. Thank you, commissioners. Have we started, as the contractors started work down there on Phase Three yet?
Phase Three, we actually have a pre-con September 15?
Nope, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. I know September 1st was the day they could start, right?
Yes, indeed.
So we have a short window of time.
This will unlock our grading permit, which I will attend to tomorrow, and we should be able to break ground as soon as possible.
Excellent.
Ready to go, and it's, you know, hoping for a nice Indian summer and easy winter and get as much done as we can, so we're right there, excited with you to get it finally started.
There you go.
Good, yeah. Perfect.
What's the time on the playground equipment at Mowbray?
It's been ordered. It should take about 12 weeks until it's delivered. We're going to be responsible for demolition of that playground.
Question on that. So the existing...
Can't put it up in your house, the old...
Existing, no, I don't... Maybe Jim's house. Our yards are so big in the Woods community, right? That's why she moved out. It wasn't me. So my question, that playground that's there, now, it doesn't look like it's that old, and it looks nice. So is this playground that's coming in that we purchased, is that going to be in addition to what's there?
No, no, it's a total, total replacement. The current playground there is about 23 or 24 years old, and usually a playground has about a 20-year lifespan. Granted, it's doing okay, it's still safe.
Right.
But it's harder to get pieces. They stopped making them.
Gotcha.
And then once you start to pirate things and jerry-rig them and make them your own, you've lost, you know, everything, and now you've got, you know...
I didn't realize it was that old.
I took my elementary kids there.
So back to what we're saying, it's been ordered 12 weeks. We're probably going to close the playground, I'm going to say October 15th. That'll give our staff about three weeks to a month to go ahead and remove all the material, dig up all the footers, and then level the surface so the company can come in and begin construction. And we'll go ahead and construct through the winter. The only slow delay would be, you know, because we're doing port in place and a significant part of the area, would be temperature-dependent. But again, that's going to be, you know, January and February. Nobody's going to be out there anyway, so we would wait until...
So Beth does a great job of getting, you know, the announcements out, but I think with this particular project, it might be a good idea if we put something out front that says what we're doing, the anticipated timeline, and then maybe a picture of the completed thing. That way, when Mom brings the little one here, she parks her car and looks, and it's gone, you know, they don't panic, like they want to know. So if we just do a little information board, something, you probably already thought of that.
We already got that. We have the company, CompHAN, creating a poster of, a screenshot of what the intended playground will look like, saying that, you know, this is when it's going to close, this is when construction will start.
See, Steve, you should have said, "That's a great idea. We're going to do that now." And then you give him credit. You just took it away from him.
You know how hard that is? But that is a good idea, and, you know, because of the popularity of that playground, we want to make sure that we get the word out appropriately and to as many different avenues as possible. We're excited. Thank you, guys, again, for your...
You know, he's really been very fiscally conservative with his requests over the years. I think he's really...
Especially on lawn mowers.
He's really coming into his own. I think what we need to do is, we need to allow him to stop being last all the time. I think maybe we can move him up the ladder presentations. I think he's deserved it. And besides, poor Beryl, she wants to get home.
You going to have that conversation with Quimby?
He's not here. Anyway.
But you give more time with me now at the end.
Sure, that's it.
So I see the fine print here. It says Queenstown to Centerville 2026, man.
That's right.
You are the man! Appreciate that very much.
But thank you again.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, commissioners, item five, pages 15 and 16. This is a letter of opposition to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. This was submitted to us by Captain Robert Newberry, opposing the Maryland Fisheries Management Plan. The proposed legislation would result in a 58% reduction in Maryland's commercial striped bass harvest, and as believed this measure would devastate our commercial fishing industry, both on the recreational side and charter fishing side. So we would offer this letter of opposition.
I move to execute the letter of opposition to MDR regarding Maryland's fishery management plan.
Second.
Motion second? Any discussion?
It just, it's one regulation after another. It's just, it's always something, you know, for the charter boat captains, and it's not just the charter boat captains, too. I mean, this, I mean, Captain Newberry really presents his case well. I mean, it has ancillary effects on hotel stays, restaurant revenues, I mean, everything. And I think the reduction of one fish per angler has already put a hurt in on them. And this is, I'll gladly sign it.
Well, you know, that industry is hurting. I mean, that ecosystem, the whole nine yards, I mean, everything from the LY being sucked up by the tens of millions of pounds.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Commercial net shooting down in Virginia.
You know, you've got the catfish, you've got the snakeheads, everything. And, you know, it's, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I got mixed feelings about this, because I know what the fishing was like 10 years ago, and I know what it's like now. And, you know, charter boat guys might be able to find them, but that's about the only ones that can find them. And that's why I travel that bridge every day, and I look out there, and I'm telling you, there's no boats out there. There may be seven of them right there around the pilings of the bridges, but anywhere else, they're nonexistent on the weekends. It's that bad. So, I, you know, I mean, I wonder what it was like when they shut it down the last time.
I remember it. I remember it. It was like a three-year moratorium.
I remember when they opened it, and it was, it was a free-for-all, but...
I mean, you could walk across the bay and never get wet, there were so many charter boats out there, you know?
Well, and I think that sooner or later, that's going to come, you know...
They're going to force it.
They're going to force it, because it's going to crash, so. And I'm not saying that the commercial water, it's not their fault, it's a combination of things, but right now, it's just not looking good, so.
If I may, gentlemen, you know, this whole Conawingo thing has opened up a lot of... Watermen claim that 70, 60 to 70% of the rockfish, which is what this is targeting, spawn just down from the Conawingo Dam. And they do it in the spring, and what happens is, when they open the sediment, it washes away the eggs, and that's why, that's one of the main reasons that we have a shortage of fish. So this, this is a Band-Aid of a Band-Aid. This is not going to solve the problem. What could solve the problem is everything we've talked about with trying to do sediment catches above the dam, because it's not going to change. It's going to get worse.
I agree.
So could we send, would you gentlemen mind if we send an app, send this out, but we do a follow-up letter about what I just alluded to? Could we do that? Thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, commissioners, we have one desk item, and this is actually a support letter for our local Queen Anne's County Arts Council, Center for the Arts. They're submitting an application for $300,000 to assist in the completion of the renovation work to the Annex, which is the warehouse building behind the Arts Council building that we gave them in Centerville here.
Yes.
I move to execute the Queen Anne's County Arts Council grant letter of support.
Second. Motion second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Jack's off.
Commissioners, that's all we have for this evening. Some public comment?
You can sign up?
Yeah.
All right, roundtable.
I'll go first, because I'm going to be...
Patrick, you're going to wait, because Phil's going to go first.
You're out of order.
So I had the distinct pleasure last night to read a proclamation for a gentleman by the name of John White.
Awesome, good. You did it?
Yes. So you have the Sons of the American Legion, and they give the Sons of the American Legion Squadron Commander of the Year an award. And the Squadron Commander of the Year is selected, and they are, well, let's put it this way, it's nationwide.
Right.
So when you think about all the American Legions that there are across the country, and the squadron commanders that manage those posts across the country, to have John White from Post 18 to be named Squadron Commander of the Year from our Centerville, it was just, it was amazing. A lot of people don't understand the role that some of these civic organizations provide, but I'm going to read this, the proclamation that I read last night, because this guy is amazing. We need 300 more like him in our community. Whereas the members of Squadron 18 and the entire Post 18 family overwhelmingly support Squadron Commander John White for receiving Squadron Commander of the Year. And whereas John White has been dedicated member of the Sons of the American Legion since 2017, and has served honorably as a Squadron Commander for the past four years. Whereas John devotes countless hours each day volunteering at Post 18, supporting not only squadron activities, but also the entire Post family, including handling and ordering shopping and advertising and setup for the weekly Friday night dinners. And whereas John has played a vital role in welcoming veterans each Monday morning, ensuring that the Post is open, accessible, and supportive of their needs. And whereas John is instrumental in coordinating the Midshore Toys for Tots Program, managing logistics across four counties, organizing storage and distribution, and personally ensuring that the children in need receive toys, candy, and letters during their annual Letters of Santa program that reaches approximately 150 children each year. And whereas John actively participates in the setup and the cleanup for the annual Reis Across America ceremonies at two local cemeteries, honoring the memory of veterans with dignity and respect. And whereas John has contributed significantly to the growth and improvement of the Post home, assisting in fundraising efforts and working with contractors during major renovations, ensuring the success and sustainability of Post 18. And whereas the success of Jeff Davis American Legion Post 18 is a direct reflection of the dedication and teamwork of all its members, with John White leading by example, always willing to assist anyone in a time of need, and serving as a cornerstone to the Post's continued strength. So you think about all the things that he's done, and all the great work that Posts do all across this country, and to be voted Squadron Commander of the Year is, I mean, it's unprecedented. And I have to tell you, it was just an amazing experience last night, one of the great things about being a commissioner and getting to do these things.
Can we bring him in?
That's all I have. Pretty big.
Patrick?
It's kind of apropos, that private first-class William Quillen, represented here by our wonderful folks. On Monday, I had the honor of going to Arlington National Cemetery and witnessing incredible patriotic...
Ceremony.
Ceremony with my wife's uncle, who was in Vietnam and had three Purple Hearts and Bronze Star, and he taught at the War College after Vietnam in Carlisle. And we didn't get out of our car, and we pulled up, and there's this caisson sitting there with this casket. And there's probably, I believe there were like seven horses. So you had two, four, six, and then you had a single horse. And everything is just deathly silent. two, four, six, and then you had a single horse. And everything is just deathly silent.
Officer?
Oh, yeah. Colonel, yeah. And then in the back, you have the riderless horse with the boot on backwards, I guess. And they just start walking. And nobody says a word. And all you can hear is the hoof, I'm sorry. This is, all you can hear is the, the noise of the, the horses. And we go down this hill, and there, out front of the caisson is Marines. And we get down to the bottom of the hill, and they stop. And then they do their procession. And they bring us over to an open, to an area where there's some chairs. And as we're sitting there, the pastor reads scripture. And then they do a twenty-one-gun salute. They did a twenty-one-gun salute up on the ridge. So, we're down here, looking up. And you have, over here, you have seven, all, seven marksmen. And the, you know, the twenty-one-gun salute is very, like, and then on the other ridge, you have, I'd say, a hundred of soldiers that were doing, I, I don't know the terminology, because I'm not a, I'm not a military person, but they do the, they do their marching and their ceremony. And then they, a single soldier plays taps. And they all stop while they're going through this. And then, one at a time, while the families standing there, looking up at these folks, they just start marching down the hill, on, get behind the caisson. And there's probably a hundred and fifty, and they just march away while the family is sitting there. So, I just felt incredibly honored to be an American, to be amongst four or five hundred thousand graves of men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And I just thank God that we live in the greatest country that he ever created, and that we have men like you just were describing. And all of the people who have served our country and who are serving our country is just an incredible feat.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, you know what? I'm going to dovetail on that, because Patrick's right. It, it's funny, Arlington Cemetery, a lot of people don't know this, but that was General Robert E. Lee's farm. And naturally, the North took it and said, "We're going to make a hollowed ground in a, in a cemetery." And you guys don't know this, but I employed the great, great, great granddaughter of Robert E. Lee, Shannon Lee.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah. And it blew my mind when she told me that.
Wow.
You know, she goes, "I don't tell people that." I said, "You should be proud of that." You know, I mean, it was just part of history. But I also had the honor of working at Arlington National Cemetery. And we had to be done by nine o'clock in the morning, because that's when all the procession started. And I mean, it, it's, it's a well-orchestrated, well-oiled machine, how they go through this. And in order for us to get the concrete in there, they had to take down these huge seconds, sections of fence. And we're working in the pitch black. So, they got these lights set up for us. And these lights are shining where we're pouring concrete. And they're shining out into the cemetery. And I'm looking out at the cemetery, and it's, you know, right before the sun's coming up. So, you know, you're getting a little bit of light. And there are certain headstones that are like brand-new. And I'm walking out there, and I'm reading them. And I'm in a section, they're World War II vets, and, you know, died in this and whatever. And that's a new one, and that's a new one. And I walk a hundred and fifty yards into the cemetery. And I can't figure out, how come they's got a new headset, or a headstone, excuse me, until I turned around to walk back. And on the back of those new ones, it's the wife's name. She's interned with the husband.
Oh, how awesome.
So, and, yeah, I thought that was totally impressive. My first encounter with Arlington National Cemetery is I went in the Marine Corps under Buddy System. Kevin Wooton, a good friend of mine, we grew up together, went in at the same time, went through Paris Island at the same time. I went into jets, and he went into some electrical. And he was a smart guy. He was on an Air Force ROTC, and he dropped out of it and wanted to get in the Marine Corps. He got stationed at Twenty-Nine Palms, went to LA, met the office recruiter. They pulled him out of the Marine Corps and put him in reserves. He went to USC, became the battalion commander of the ROTC program there. And then, two years later, he was killed in a helicopter crash in Korea, his whole platoon. So, I, you know, I, I got to, I got to escort his body and, and bring him there. And, and it was truly an honor. And my oldest son is named after him. So, it is a great, great, I, I think that everybody should go there, just, just to walk through there. The, the walls that encompass the entire property on the inside are nothing but urns for the remains. And, and they're all stacked in there. It's just, it's impressive. And it's, it's, it really, you know, ground, you know, grounds you there. And, and to some of the stuff, and, and the way that they have it set up where you can look up, you know, loved ones, it's, it's impressive. So, I thought that was great. And I really am sad that yesterday I had to work until ten-thirty at night. But I wanted to be there for that, because that is truly a huge honor for Mr. White. And, and, I mean, the entire nation, that, that is impressive, so.
You know, it's, what the, the fun part about the evening was, he had no idea.
Yeah.
He had no idea.
Wow.
He was there for what he believed was going to be a Sons of the American Legion Squadron meeting.
Right.
And the, the, one of the gentlemen there made a motion to suspend the meeting in order to present an award. And then they went into this whole, I mean, it was, it was a big deal. And he had no idea. Absolutely speechless. So, we presented him with the proclamation. I attached to the proclamation in its folder, one of our county commissioner pins that will hold the proclamation in the folder. And then the gals got me a flag. And we presented the flag to him. And then, of course, one of our commissioner appreciation coins, too, for, for everything he does. And it's not just necessarily the Post, but it's, is what he does that affects our entire community, not just Post Eighteen. He does a lot. Their, their Post do a lot of things in our community. And he leads the charge on that. Just an amazing individual. Very humble human being.
And the last thing I'm going to say is, tomorrow, Presidente and myself and our leader in, in, in all aspects, Todd, we're going to head to New York with our finance people and Heather Tenali and...
Get us that AAA bond rating.
Yeah.
Try and get some money.
Trying to get some money. Got to refill the coffers. So, looking forward to it. And we're on a mission now. We want that third AAA. And they better give it to us, because it could get violent. So, turn it over to you, boss.
Well, good luck on that.
Yeah.
I had an opportunity to make that trip myself. And it's an amazing experience.
It'll be my...
Don't take no for an answer, Jim. Chris, don't take no for an answer.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.